Hey y'all, welcome back to another vlog. I'm still getting ready. Um, I just thought that I would come on and talk to y'all real quick because I haven't talked to y'all yet. This whole vlog pretty much, but I am almost done getting ready. Oh, no! I just broke my lip liner. Okay, so I'm almost done getting ready. Like I was saying, um, today, I'm, okay. So I had every intention of making this vlog a weekly vlog, but somehow it's already Wednesday. I don't know how that happened. This is no longer gonna be a weekly vlog. Do y'all consider weekly vlogs to be like literally Monday through Friday? Or Monday through Sunday, like an entire week? Or do you consider a weekly vlog to be three or more days? Because I feel like there's a fine line between weekly vlogs and like just regular day in my life videos. I feel like you can say a weekly vlog is three or more days, in my opinion. And then you start treading, you know, treading, uh... What am I trying to say? Tread, treading waters? I don't know, but you kind of get into a tricky spot when you talk about days in my life. Now, days in my life could be three or less, either two to three days. But the weekly vlogs start at three or more days, in my opinion. So yeah, we'll just call it a weekly vlog. Welcome back to a weekly vlog, y'all. Today's Wednesday. Have a lot to catch our love on. Y'all, I was down bad last Sunday, okay? I don't know what happened. I had a good week last week. I didn't really record. The weekend rolls around, and I don't know what happened. I don't know if I ate something. I don't know what happened to me, but I got real sick on Sunday. I'm talking about like, trigger warning, by the way. But I threw up like four times on Sunday. So something happened between Friday and Saturday. I don't know. And me throwing up is like a big deal because I never throw up. But Sunday, I threw up like four times. So, yeah, I was down bad. I was sick, okay? But Monday comes around, and I was intending on starting this vlog on Monday, but y'all, I was just recovering from Sunday. I don't know what was going on. Barely made it to work. Didn't I do any of my homework or anything for my classes? I went to work, came home, went to sleep. That was my Monday. And then yesterday, I attempted to start the vlog. I showed y'all my juice recipe that I made. I got some questions from the other day whenever I posted a picture of the green juice that I was drinking. I have perfected my green juice recipe. So I wanted to show it to y'all because I got a question about like what the, what the ingredients were and what the exact measurements were, but I felt bad because I didn't really know. Because normally whenever I make juice, I don't really follow a recipe. I just kind of grab whatever fruits and vegetables I think will go good together. So let me show you my juice. Um, yeah, so like I was saying, I kind of lost track for a second. But like I was saying, I made a juice last night, and I wanted to show y'all like the exact measurements of everything that I made because I got a question about it on my stories. I'm sorry if I'm saying the same thing twice. But I got a question about the, uh, the measurements. And like I said, I never really do that, so I didn't know. So yesterday, I made sure to make the juice again so that I could tell y'all exactly what I used to make this amount of juice, which is like a... I'm not exactly sure. Maybe too, I don't know. But anyway, yeah, let me tell you how much would I use to make this amount of juice. I used six apples, one cucumber, one lemon, a little baby piece of ginger, just a little bit. You can use more if you like, but I just, I'm a baby when it comes to ginger. I don't like my drinks to be spicy. But I do like the health benefits of ginger, so that's why I used it. And then I also used, um, a whole pack of celery hearts. So I believe the celery hearts are like shorter, like they were smaller than like regular celery. I threw away the bag, but it says celery hearts, so it wasn't just like a, like the big stalk of celery. But anyway, that's what I used to make this perfectly filled jar. Like literally perfect, not even over the rim. Perfect amount of juice. And this is like my little detox juice recipe. Y'all know I'm trying to lose weight. I'm trying to drop like 10 pounds before my 21st birthday, which is definitely doable because my birthday is in January. And I want to get back to the size that I was for my 20th birthday. Because y'all know, for some reason this year I gained a lot of weight. I think it's because I started my, you know, my little office job. And you know, sedentary jobs where you're just sitting there. It can take a toll on you, especially if you're not working out. And I was definitely not working out that much. I just felt like I didn't need to. But obviously I was wrong. I gained like, from January to now, it's September, I gained, I gained, I want to say like, 20 pounds. I don't want anybody to take offense to this. That's just the way that I feel about my body. I prefer to be smaller. I just think that it just looks better on me and I feel better being smaller. So I'm not trying to like, make anybody feel bad if that's not what you want. Saturday, I went to go get my hair done, so I do have a little fresh retie. Um, I haven't braided my hair or anything since I got my hair done. She did wash it, so my hair is a little bit shrunken, especially because I wore it in a bun yesterday. But we do have the fresh retie, y'all. I actually want to go ahead and pack my lunch for work. Been trying to do right with my eating habits lately. Been trying not to go to McDonald's, it's all been. Restocked on some coconut water, because I love coconut water. So for my salad, I got this spinach harvest bowl from HEB. It has spinach, balsamic vinaigrette, feta cheese, um, pecans, apples, and dried cranberries. I don't know. This sounds good right now, but every time I actually get to my lunch break, I want to go to Jack in the Box, and I don't want to eat this. I got some fruit, so I'm gonna take a banana with me to snack on. Because at my job, we have, um, my boss like buys us like snacks. Basically, all kinds of snacks. Some of them are healthy, some of them are not. Some of them are like donuts and stuff, so I'm gonna bring this. And then, also while I was at HEB, I got this, these naval oranges. No, not HEB. Whole Foods. I went to Whole Foods yesterday too. So I'm gonna bring an orange with me. So I'm just gonna try to eat something light. I think what I'm gonna do is go back to my intermittent fasting, where I don't really eat anything in the mornings except for like either a tea or a juice or coconut water. And I'm gonna eat like a light lunch and then a big dinner, or like a heavy dinner. That's my plan anyway. We'll see how it goes. All these oranges look messed up. So for my juice, I think I'm gonna wait and drink it when I get to work. So I'm just gonna add this in here. Ooh, and I also need a straw. So I had these little glass straws that I got from Amazon. Highly recommend these, y'all. I don't know why, but I have a problem with drinking things straight out the bottle. Like it kind of disgusts me for some reason. I don't know why. Even though this is my glass, I know that it's clean. I just don't like putting my lips on like a jar. I don't know why, but I don't know. It's just my thing, I guess. So I'm gonna bring this straw. Let me get a napkin. It is glass, so I don't want it to like, be clanking up against all this stuff in here. But I'm gonna bring this straw with me. And this little lunch kit that I got, by the way, is from, um, I was about to say HEB, Marshalls. Oh, it is the most perfect day outside. I love it. I hate that I have to go to work though. So, got my coconut water. I got two, actually. So I got, I'm gonna drink this on my way, but, yeah, um... Ooh, so as the month of September is coming to an end, I am almost done with my... What is that noise? Okay, so as the month of September is coming to an end, y'all know, one of my goals for this month was to read three books. And I did that, well, almost. I'm almost done with this one. This is my third book. Instead of reading Honey and Spice, like the one that I showed y'all in my, I think either my last vlog or the vlog before that, whichever one where I went to Barnes &amp; Noble and shopped. But I went out and got this one like a week ago, or maybe two weeks ago. And I'm almost done with it. Well, not almost. I'm like a third way done with it. But I think that I can finish it this week. Um, I'm on chapter four of this book. This is When Women Pray by T.D. Jakes. I love this book so far, y'all. And it's actually been helping me a lot with reading my Bible. Because y'all know, if you watched my last vlog, I got a new Bible so that it can be kind of like easier for me to read. Because the new Bible that I have has like a whole bunch of more, a whole bunch of more. Am I okay? The new Bible that I have has a whole lot more tools in it that I can use to kind of figure my way out. Figure, oh my goodness, what am I trying to say? The new Bible that I have just has more tools that are more, makes the read a lot more beginner friendly. That's what I'm trying to say. But it's been really cool seeing this book and reading this and figuring out the different women of the Bible that have used prayer to change their life. Being able to go to my Bible to find it and kind of like make notes of what I've been reading and hearing and then also put it in my Bible. It's been really nice. So I really recommend this book so far, even though I'm only on chapter four. Yeah, let's go ahead and get going. It is, I have like an hour before I have to be at work, but it takes me a little bit to get there. So I like to leave and have plenty of time. I'm gonna listen to my favorite podcast while I'm on my way. So I will talk to y'all a little bit later. So, I don't know what's going on with my eyes. Maybe because I've been looking at a computer all day at work. And at school, honestly. I was on my computer in class this morning, on my computer at work all day. And then I was just on my computer doing like my work and stuff. My eyes are so, like it's, it's hard for me to focus my eyes on something. Like everything is blurry. So even like when I have my phone like this close to my face, I still feel like I cannot see, you know? Leaving the lab right now, um, that guy that I was telling y'all about in my last vlog was here today. But he didn't come talk to me because there was like a lady sitting very close to me and I feel like he probably didn't want to like disturb her, maybe? Good morning, y'all. So it is Saturday morning. Just got done filming a lock video to Michaela Lock's morning routine that's gonna go up tomorrow. And I'm feeling good. The video is almost done saving. And I did all this before 10 o'clock in the morning. It's not even 10 o'clock yet. Well, actually, is it? I don't know. But all I know is it's not even 12 PM. It's still morning time and I have been super productive this morning. I went for a walk this morning, came back, did my makeup, filmed my video, edited my video. So now that's going up. I finished my thumbnail, so that's all good. Um, what I'm gonna do today though is, I'm, okay. Let's just have like a little faith talk. I'm gonna clean my mess over here, my makeup and stuff, while I talk to y'all. But, um, basically, last week at service, we were talking about how it's important to use the day that God gave us to rest, strictly for rest, and spending time with Him instead of working. So one thing that I have not been doing a good job of is doing that. So normally on Sundays, I find myself catching up on things that I didn't get to do on Friday night or Saturday. So I'm trying to like rework my brain to really get stuff done on Saturday so that on Sunday, I can truly go to church, relax in time with my friends, my family, whoever, and just take the day to appreciate resting and to really put resting as the forefront of my mind instead of having to hurry up and play catch up doing my homework and all this other stuff. So today is Saturday. I woke up really early this morning. I even planned out what I was gonna do today, which was film my video. Check, already did that. And then I also wanted to, uh, go get my pedicure because I did get my nails done earlier last week, and I don't really like them. That's why I wasn't like trying to show y'all like that because this is just like not really my style. It's like short square, which is not really what I wanted. I showed her later the picture. She completely flopped. Did not do what I wanted. But the good thing is this kind man in the nail shop paid for my nails for me. Out of nowhere! So I appreciate him for doing that because I don't like it already. So I would have been even more upset if I had to pay for it and I don't like it. So he paid for them, which is really nice. So I'm gonna go get my feet done today. And then another thing that I wanted to do today is get some of my homework done. Last night, I did a lot of my homework. Did not record on, I didn't record yesterday. I just kind of took a break from blogging. And then, what else am I gonna do today? I'm gonna get together grocery lists, just a lot of stuff. I don't know if I'm gonna film everything, but I'm just letting y'all know that today is Saturday. Today, I'm getting things done so that tomorrow, I can relax. That's basically it.
I'm gonna oil the pan and add my shallots and sweat them out, saute them down. A handful of shallots that I thinly sliced.
That pedicure was so nice, y'all. It was the best one I've ever gotten. I got the more expensive one today. Like they wrapped my foot up in the towel and everything. Walled it up real good. It was really nice. And it was also 20% off today, so that's nice. That's why I got it, to be honest. Because I can, I always like don't mind spending for my nails, but for my pedicures, I just always normally get just the basic one. But I'm really glad that I got the real deep massage, the real nice pedicure today. But I'm on my way to the grocery store now. Um, I already have taken a picture of my list that I made when I was back home. So this week, I plan on making a vegan stew, like a meatless stew. I need a specialty ingredient though. I'm gonna need some oyster mushrooms and HEB. Normally doesn't have that, so I'm gonna have to go to two different stores today. I'm gonna have to go to Whole Foods, which will most likely have the oyster mushrooms. And then I'm gonna go to HEB to get like all of my regular stuff. So, yeah, that's the plan right now. It feels really nice knocking everything off of my to-do list today. Alright y'all, so I just left Whole Foods. Um, they didn't have the mushrooms that I was looking for. I needed oyster mushrooms. They did have blue oyster mushrooms, but I'm not sure if that's natural. So, and they also looked really disgusting. So I just got these and said, "These are royal trumpet mushrooms." I got these because I've had these before and I like them. I like the shape of this mushroom. Like I can, I feel like I can make it look like, um, like a sausage, like when you cut sausages up horizontally, you know what I mean? Anyway, hard to explain, but I know what I'm saying in my mind. Now that I got my mushrooms for my stew, I'm gonna go ahead and head over to HEB and just get the rest of the groceries that I need and I'm gonna go home. Alright y'all, so the other day, I went and bought this paint from Sherman Williams. It's just in extra white. Wait, where does it say the name? Over here. Extra white satin paint. Just wanted to cover up the, uh, like the wood filler stains on this part in the door. So I just did like one single coat of the extra white paint. I'm just gonna sit on it for a few days. I'm gonna go back and pick out another color of white to go for the actual wall in the bathroom. I'm thinking that I want like an eggshell or something like that. But the only problem is I feel like the eggshell white will be like more of a warmer tone. And this extra white, I'm getting more of a cool tone type of feel. And I'm not sure if that's what I want because, as you can see, I have gold as like my accent on my vanity and also along the shower. And then also like my shower head and everything is gold. And then I just recently went out and bought these little things so that I can have like a little pop of gold up here too, on the shower curtain. But... But this right here is kind of like a cool tones. This is it in natural daylight. I got the window open. And then with the light on, am I just tripping or is this kind of like a blue tint? Like it's cool toned? Let me know what you think in the comments because I'm thinking about going back to get a different shade of white. It's actually called pure white. So I might just have to order that because when I was there the other day, they didn't have pure white. So he just gave me this one. He said it was very similar, but I'm thinking that this is a little bit, um, cool toned. So yeah, I'm not gonna finish painting it. Just wanted to do the single coat, sit on it for a few days. And then I'm gonna go out, maybe the next couple of weeks to pick out the paint to go actually all over the entire bathroom. But anyways, thank y'all so much for watching this weekly vlog. I'll see y'all in my next one and I'm out.